Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for Monday, June 3, 2024, Board of Trustees for the Village of Deerfield. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jerry. If we could all rise, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have a couple proclamations that I'd like to read and present. The first proclamation is for Juneteenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Larry, assume the position.
I had to say that that way, by the way.
Yeah, I knew you had to. There's no na's.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
And Mayor Shapiro is absent, but we have a quorum.
Thank you. Vicki, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You're waiting for the staff? Okay, this evening, we're going to start. We have a proclamation honoring the service of Victoria J. Street, Executive Director, Deerfield, Bannockburn, Riverwoods Chamber of Commerce. Whereas on behalf of the Village of Deerfield, we'd like to thank Victoria J. Street for her 25 years of being a dedicated and active partner with the village and a true professional representative of the DBR Chamber of Commerce as Executive Director. Whereas Vicki has been a tireless advocate for the local business community, fostering a community of entrepreneurs and professionals who collaborate and support each other, thereby creating a more dynamic business environment. Whereas Vicki facilitated communication with businesses during impactful public improvements, such as the reconstruction of Lake Cook Road, Deerfield Road, most recently Waukegan Road. And whereas Vicki, a lifelong resident of Deerfield, has been instrumental in advocating for businesses with participation in the village's Y-2K Preparation Committee in 1999 and the Clean Air Counts Project in the 2000s, and providing creative inspiration for many community events like Harvest Fest, the Holiday Tree Lighting, and Winter Market that provide opportunities for DBR Chamber members to promote their businesses and community building with residents. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Vicki provided essential services to our businesses, employees, visitors, and residents by personally distributing masks and posters with legal requirements for hotels, restaurants, retail location and offices, and signing up individuals for the local vaccine clinic. And whereas Vicki developed and maintained a texting program to promote local businesses during the lockdown, exemplifying her creative leadership and service. And whereas Vicki's involvement extends far beyond her professional role to her active participation in local organizations, such as the Deerfield Family Day Committee, the Rotary Club of Deerfield, and the Deerfield Greenhouse Gas Reduction Working Group, and many more. And whereas we thank Vicki for 25 years of service to the community, congratulate her on an outstanding career of service, and recognize that while she will no longer serve as the Executive Director of the DBR Chamber Commerce, she will continue to give back to the community that she cares for so much. And now, therefore, Daniel Shapiro, the mayor of the Village of Deerfield, proclaims June 17, 2024, as Victoria J. Street Day in the Village of Deerfield, and urge all residents to join me in honoring Vicki for her exemplary service and dedication to our community. Proclaim the 17th Day of June 2024. Any more? Do I have a motion or approve the proclamation?
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. I'm sorry? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Do we have something for you, Vicki? Some things I should say. Very fancy. We have a proclamation praying for you. Yes, I read, and it took me a long time because there was so much to say about it.
Why, if you paid, you might.
And we have a special gift.
Oh, wow. Perfect.
It's a puppy. It's a puppy.
A puppy. Don't say puppy.
In the kitchen? I would just like to say.
At the mic.
Sorry.
So I would just like to say, I've lived and worked in Deerfield my entire life. And for the past 25 years, I've had the pleasure of being the Executive Director, I'm going to cry, of the Chamber. And it's been a joy every single day for me to go to work. And mayor, who's not here, but pro town mayor, and trustees, and especially to all my friends at Villatall, all the amazing, outstanding employees that the Village of Deerfield has, and the next generation, have been a pleasure to work with and have made my job so much easier. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. At this time, we're going to recess for about 10 minutes. We're going to join Vicki just outside the boardroom, have cake and coffee, and we'll resume in about 10 minutes. We're going to resume the meeting at this time. Minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion or approve?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills and payroll. Do I have a motion or approve?
Move.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. This is public comment for a non-agenda item. We had a sign-in sheet. We have one name on there who I'll call in a moment. If there's anybody who'd like to address the board for a non-agenda item during the public comment, we'll take you right after that. The name that I have here is Tracy Merrill. Tracy, I'd like to add that all public comments are limited to three minutes. The board will not engage in dialogue during public comment, but we're more than happy to listen to you.
Yep, thank you.
If you could start, before you start, identify yourself for the record.
My name is Tracy Merrill. I'm a resident of Deerfield. I live in the Clavinia neighborhood at 315 Resithia Drive. I've met all of you before. I've been at various different meetings. But essentially, I wanted to say an additional statement. So, good evening to not only the Board of Trustees, but fellow residents of Deerfield. I stand before you today not only to address the board, but to speak directly to our community. In the spirit of transparency, which you have consistently emphasized as a cornerstone of your governance, it is crucial that all residents understand the experiences of my neighbors and that I have also experienced during the approval process of the Pulte Planned Unit Development Project. Fellow residents, I am deeply disappointed that the board and plan commission have not fulfilled their responsibilities. My husband, our neighbors, and I attended numerous meetings, half a dozen in total, and many more of us submitted detailed emailed comments. Despite our persistent efforts, not a single city representative challenged a developer or advocated for the preservation of the berm, a natural landscape and crucial ecosystem at the end of our street and along our property line. Our evidence was ignored, including an appraisal and engineering report. Our concerns were met with silence, and the city approved the development without considering the long-term impact on the residents whose lives will be forever altered by this project. Every statement and request from a resident, whether from one person or hundreds, deserves your full attention. Our concerns matter. I pose a question to you. What secures reelections, ignoring your constituents and their well-being or focusing solely on revenue generation, regardless of the community's needs? Our collective voices should guide your decisions, not be drowned out by the allure of financial gains. However, there's still time to right this wrong. You have the power to require Pulte to reconfigure their site plan and preserve the berm at the end of Resithia Drive. You have the power to even work with other developers who would be willing to preserve the environment and respect the surrounding community. Doing so would not only demonstrate to us, but to all of Deerfield residents, that you genuinely care about our well-being, our properties, and our environment. This action would set a precedent for any future developer that our community's standards and respect are paramount. This is how reelections are won, by doing what is right for the constituents, by not abusing the power to the detriment of the innocent families living in Deerfield. You have the opportunity to correct this course and show that our voices, our lives, and our environment are your top priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board during this public comment portion on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move to the reports. First item is 24-69, Consideration in Action on the Plan Commission Recommendation on the Request for an Amendment for the Comprehensive Plan: A rezoning of a rezoning of Parkway North 5 and 8 from I-1 Office Research Restricted Industrial District to R-5 General Residence District, and an amendment to the Parkway North Plan Unit Development to allow a residential plan unit development and approval of a preliminary development plan with necessary exceptions at Parkway North 5 and 8 in the Parkway North Center.
Thank you. On May 23, 2024, the Plan Commission held a public hearing to consider the request from Ven Point Real Estate to develop the 10-acre subject property in the Parkway North Center with a residential rental development consisting of 147 units in 29 buildings, each with attached garages. The majority of the units will be two- and three-bedroom units. Fifteen of the new units will be affordable to meet the village's affordable housing ordinance. Townhome units will have direct access to the pedestrian and road network from their front doors and garages. A development will include several open areas, including a dog park, event pavilion, lawn grass, and two barbecue areas. The open space areas within the proposed development are planned to connect to the existing recreational paths within the Parkway North Center. The existing landscape berm along Saunders Road, which is an outlot owned by the Parkway North Association, will remain. Recall, in 2016, the property owners went through the zoning approval process for the subject property, Parkway North 5 and 8, and were granted approval for a final development plan for a five-story, 200,000-square-foot office building with just over 1,100 total parking spaces. The final development plan approvals have since been extended with an expiration of approvals of May of 2025. Following its consideration, the Plan Commission voted four to zero to recan approval with three separate motions. One, amending the comprehensive plan. Two, zoning map amendment from I-1 to R-5. And three, preliminary approval of an amendment to the Parkway North Center Planned Unit Development Plan and preliminary approval of a residential planned unit development in the R-5 General Residential District with the following exceptions: An exception for the total area of land required based on the mix of units in the proposed development; an exception to allow the streets in this development to be private; an exception for structures to be located in the 40-foot perimeter setbacks and the setbacks between the private streets and the buildings; and exception to the maximum building height to allow a height of 45 feet in lieu of the maximum allowed height of 35 feet; and an exception to allow one identification entry sign at the main entrance to be less than 25 feet from the property lines, which approvals are subject to the following conditions, and that is the approval of a preliminary plat of subdivision to resubdivide the property and any additional conditions that are imposed tonight. We have with us tonight Plan Commission Chair Bromberg and Member Keefe are with us tonight to answer questions, as well as the petitioner, and they are here to present their proposal. And I would suggest that you entertain a proposal from the petitioner.
Before you begin, if you can each identify yourself for the record, please.
My name's Nick Marietti.
I'm Joe Mashick, BSB Design.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Nick Marietti. I'm a principal at Ven Point Real Estate. We are here to propose a 147-unit townhome development on the lots currently known as Parkway North 5 and 8. I've got with me here tonight Joe Mashick from BSB, who's our lead architect on the project, and will walk you through the entitlement request and the site plan. I also have Lisa Cassidy from B3 Engineering with us as well if should any engineering-related questions come up. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, and really have to thank the Plan Commission and staff to get us this far. It's been really helpful so far. It's been a great process. The site itself, as explained in the report, is a 10-acre site within the Parkway North Office Development. We are redeveloping lots 5 and lots 8. Lot 5 currently has Bright Horizons daycare facility on it, and lot 8 is currently vacant. They are on the east side of Sanders Road. Let me move this right here. Bear with me. There we go. It's on the east side of Sanders Road, just south of Deerfield Road on the west side of Parkway North Development. Got a 10-acre site, and it's lots 5 and lots 8. And of course, there we go. And what was mentioned before was the 10-acre development that was approved in 2016, which was 200,000 square feet of office in a five-story building with 1,100 surface parking spaces. And you'll see the surface parking spaces go all the way up to lots 5 and lot 8's perimeter. What I'd like to mention here is that as part of the development, and I'm going to continue to do this every time because I'm trying to be in a hurry here and mindful of your time. So, our development itself fits within the Parkway North Planned Unit Development. And as part of that Planned Unit Development that's already been approved and developed, there's a 50-foot strip or an outlot on the west side between Sanders Road and our lot, which provides open space and buffer that we're not touching, we're actually enhancing, and a 23-foot buffer on the north side between the car wash and the existing lots. Also, on the west side, there's a retention pond, and there's also a joint access road that runs along the east side of our site, which is the orange block on the plan, which also falls within that 25-foot perimeter. So, one of the challenges we had on the residential PUD is the 25-foot perimeter. Since we are essentially a PUD that's falling within a PUD, we've already got the existing 50-foot setback along Sanders Road, which is being preserved and is part of the Parkway North, and the 23-foot buffer along the north side, as well as the buffering along the east side at the pond. So, even though we are residential PUD that is required to have a 25-foot perimeter, we're essentially a PUD within a PUD. So, we're asking for a variation of those setbacks. The important thing about this is that we also met with Riverwoods in January 2024 since there was a, there was an ordinance, a 100-foot setback from Sanders Road, parking setback, and a 300-foot building setback. So, I want to get the, so we got a release, and that was the word I was looking for. I'm a design-y type. I don't do the, so we were asking for a release from those stipulations from Riverwoods, which we received in January 2024.
Yeah, I would just add that that was in the form of an agreement not to enforce, just to be clear.
Thank you. So, yes. So, that was an important part of it. And as you can see, the separation between Riverwoods, the Thorn Gate Development, and our development is 230 feet. Also, there's the existing lot, one berm, within the Parkway Development. And so, we've really been cognizant of our effect on the neighbors. We also have provided money for additional trees within the Thorn Gate Development in Riverwoods to also benefit them, but also benefit the Sanders Road corridor. The development itself is 147 units. 138 of them are in either courtyard-style townhouses or what we call terrace townhouses, which are the yellow on the perimeter of the site. And then there's an additional eight units, which are an at-grade, single-level, one-bedroom apartment that also has a one-car attached garage. And that's what you see up in the upper right-hand corner. We put those in key locations because it's a two-story end, because we were cognizant of our request for the additional height. And I'll get to that in a moment. But we also wanted to design it in key locations where we bring the height down at the corners to minimize the effect of the height. The open space, we tie into the open space, north is to the left, by the way. I turned it sideways so that I met the architecture sheets that we have coming up. But you can see we have several pocket parks, two barbecue pavilions, an event pavilion with an overlook over the pond, as well as connector trails to the existing Parkway North trail system. So, we're adding to that, plus we're enhancing our residents' lifestyle as well by plugging into the system. And I'm going to go back here for a second because I do want to mention again, just reiterate the fact that this outlot one, which is part of the original PUD, is 50 feet wide along Sanders Road and 23 foot wide along the north side, which where we buffer up against a car wash. And then along the south side at Parkway North, there's a really beautifully landscaped Parkway that we're leaving intact. So, everything from our property line north will be redeveloped and re-lanscaped, but we're preserving that Parkway within Parkway North. Parking, we really wanted to avoid large parking lot areas. So, what we did was we designed it in a little bit more of an urban fashion. And the reason why we have two styles of townhouses, the yellow, which is the perimeter, which we call the terrace homes, those are essentially a garage-front townhouse so that we can provide a nice elevation along Sanders Road and the pond and at the perimeter. And the courtyard homes in the center have a rear garage, and they're organized mainly around courtyards, but then also provide a front door to our access roads. And we provide parking on the street in front of those units that would be either assigned or for guests. It's really more of a, we wanted to, again, avoid large parking fields and wanted to create more of a neighborhood feel within the PUD. The landscape itself, you can see, is extensively landscaped. We provided landscape primarily on all sides. We really have beefed up the landscape at the corners, using mostly, I'm going to say mostly native plants. I wanted to, I wanted to say we used all native plants, but I did provide a, one of my favorite trees is a London plane tree, and I put it in.
You can say they're native-adjacent.
Native-adjacent. They're not invasive. And, you know, being from Lombard, I avoided using lilacs. So, anyhow, that aside, here we go again. You got me nervous on the native. The plant list here, you can see the trees, the only really non-native here is the London plane tree. The intermediate ornamental trees are all native. And so, we really tried to provide a decent list of decent plants and a good planting plan that is going to reflect, be reflected on the architecture. Now, if there's any questions, I want to be respectful of your time. Please break in and ask as we go. I don't want this to be overly formal, but I want to make sure that I hit all the points. The affordable thing has been really important to us. This development, being all family-style townhouses, with the exception of the one, the at-grade one-bedroom unit, are family-style townhouses. And so, by providing 15 affordable homes, it's not your typical apartment development that we typically see in these areas where you, where you get a lot of studios in one-bedrooms in your portfolio of affordable units. And with this development, you're going to be getting seven two-bedroom units, more family-style with a two-car garage, some have one car, and eight three-bedroom plans. So, if, you know, if a young teacher has a family, it's a perfect opportunity to get into the community and have something other than an apartment with an elevator. And so, it does provide more family-style housing. And I'll do it again. I thought for sure I was going to hit the wrong button again. Now, the height of the units is one of our requests. And early on, we decided that we wanted to go with a more traditional-style architecture with a peaked roof and gables. And if we were to meet your height standard, we could do it with a contemporary design. Didn't want to go that route. We felt it was more important and more kind of Deerfield style to go with a more classic peaked roof design. However, that did add 10 feet to the height of the, since you measured to the peak of the roof. Now, within your affordable ordinance, it does allow for an additional 12 feet within a multifamily development. We see this as multifamily, but it's really townhouse. And unfortunately, that 12 feet just adds to the setback that we're already asking for. It would increase that ask. So, it's just one of those little trips that we have to discuss, but we do have to ask for a variation to the height and of setbacks. I'm going to continue to do that. So, this is the terrace style with the front garage. The other was the courtyard style. So, front side and rear elevations are all classic with elements of brick, vertical siding, and horizontal siding. The bottom of this plan shows what would be facing out to Sanders Road and to the pond. So, you have balconies, patios, and a lot of glass, and some masonry. The styles themselves, you can see here, very classic styling with bay windows, standing seam bays over the bays, and gable features. This is a The, this is, this is a really good one showing the step-down on the key locations. There's eight locations where we provided a two-story end. Two of them are along Parkway Boulevard. And I'm going to kind of blaze through the architecture because these are really, I mean, it's great. I'm really excited about it. But I do want to be respectful of your time. So again, ask any questions as they come up. Again, materials, hardy siding, masonry, and just classic features. Colors, varying shades of gray. Masonry has more of a rust color. The units themselves, I'm going to go through these and race right to the cool ones here. This is the at-grade, one-bedroom apartment. It's one bedroom plus a large den and an attached one-car garage. So it really lays out like a single-level home. We wanted to open up the market not only for young families, but if there's somebody who wants to age in place and wants to rent for a few years. And this provides a place for them in the neighborhood. And I'm going to continue to do this because that's the way it's going to be. And then above that, there's a really cool three-bedroom-plus-den townhouse that sits above the one-bedroom. So this is where the two-story step-down is. So with that, the site plan itself, as I had mentioned, we are asking for the reduction in the perimeter setback, reductions of the front setbacks within the development since we have on-street parking in front of the units and wanted to create more of a rowhouse-style development. We're asking for a height reduction or a height increase as well. And we just want to make sure that we are within the PUD so that we do have a perimeter setback. However, within the letter of the law, we have to ask for the variation. The other variation is the sign. And we placed the sign at the front of the development at Parkway North, right along Private Street A, along here. And I did that really with respect to all the other signs within Parkway West. They are all within that 25 feet. We would be mimicking the sign design that's on-site. And with that, we are here for questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Trustees, do we have any comments or questions for the petition?
I think it's very interesting the way that you have varied architecturally the front and the backs of the buildings. So you have the way it faces out to the street, although initially it made the plan a little more difficult for me to read. But I think it will add more variety to the whole development to have the building set that way. So I do think that's a good thing. In some of the material received in our packets, there was some discussion, I believe, at either the pre-filing conference or the public hearing in front of the Plan Commission about whether or not your intent was to have these be all rental permanently, if you had considered any of these as for purchase. Is that, would you want to address that? Is that still something that's being thought of? Are these absolutely going to be all rentals?
Yeah, I mean, at this time, we're trying to preserve optionality to the extent we can. We are intending for these to be rentals as of today, but, you know, things change, and we want to be able to react to the market. But right now, we're planning on these being all rentals. Yes.
Okay, and maybe my next question then relates to that as well because, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is make all our building codes a little bit more sustainable. And we talked about our native-adjacent plantings. And I do like your plant list, by the way. It's a good one. We absolutely do require, as it's a federal code now, that we need to have electricity potential in every unit for people if they want to have electric vehicles that they can charge them. Let me ask you this. Was any thought given to doing any kind of solar electric panels on the roofs or any other kind of sustainable elements for the development?
Yes, we're still thinking about that. With respect to the chargers, like you said, we don't really have a choice at this point. But we do that at not all of our properties, but most of them. We have charging stations, and we're trying to kind of get ahead of the times on that across our portfolio. Some properties, for fairly obvious demographic reasons, are going to have a little bit more uptake of that than others. This, I suspect, would have plenty. So we'll certainly have the capacity, like you said, because we have to. But then we're going to try to figure out and try to use math and projections to figure out what is the right mix of units that will have them installed, ones that won't, and how that affects kind of the rental rates and things like that.
Okay, great. I did like your attention to the bike path, the connections, and the walkability throughout the site. I think that's important. Placing people into this site, which has been, for years and years, an office-building site. So I think you've been sensitive to how to move people through it. So I do applaud you for that. No, those are the questions I had.
I also had comments, particularly, one of my main interests is transportation and how these areas are reachable by public transportation, which you paid a great deal of attention to. There are bus routes also for bicycles and walking to some extent. But I noticed that most of the transportation for bicycles and other means of transportation are on the north side of Deerfield Road. And of course, your development is across. There are lights there. I suspect that you're going to have to work with the county to re-time those lights because I don't think they're designed for people to walk across or take bicycles across. They're mainly designed for letting traffic out of Parkway North, onto Deerfield Road, and into Parkway North. So the more attention you pay to that, the better. I like that. And also noting the present pace bus routes that serve this area, which are as good for residents transporting themselves to jobs as they are for other people who live in other areas transporting them to Parkway North. And that gives them access to the Lake Cook Railroad Station for Metro. It gives them access to bus service to Skokie Swift, and it gives them bus service into Highland Park. And I think that's excellent planning. I commend the Plan Commission for picking that up. And I'm looking forward to that to improve the situation in the area.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments from the board? Al, Bill, do you have anything to say? Then at this point, I would ask if there are any public comments on this agenda item. If there are, please raise your hand. Seeing none. We're going to do the motions in several different parts, right? Okay. The first motion would, I'm going to ask if there's a motion to conceptually approve an amendment to the comprehensive plan to designate the Parkway North five and eight's land use as residential use from its current office use designation. This approval, if there is an approval, would be preliminarily, preliminary only and will be subject to final approval at a time the Village Board considers Ben Point's application for a final PUD approval. Is there a motion?
I would so move for a preliminary motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
And Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next motion for this matter, I would ask if there's a motion to approve, to conceptually approve a zoning map amendment to rezone Parkway North five and eight from the I-1 Office Research Restricted Industrial District to the R-5 General Residence District. This approval would be preliminary only. Will be subject to final approval at the time the Village Board considers Ben Point's application for a final PUD approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
And Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Third, I'm going to entertain a motion to grant preliminary approval of an amendment to the Parkway North Center Planned Unit Development and to grant preliminary approval for residential planned unit development in the R-5 General Residence District to allow the development of multifamily rental units with the following exceptions. First, I think it should be A, an exception for the total area of land required based on the mix of units in the proposed development. B, an exception to allow the streets in this development to be private. C, an exception for structures to be located in the 40-foot perimeter setbacks and the setbacks between the private streets and the buildings. D, exception to the maximum building height to allow a height of 45 feet in lieu of the maximum allowable height of 35 feet. And E, an exception to allow one identification entry sign at the main entrance to be less than 25 feet from the property lines, which approvals are subject to the following conditions. A, approval of a preliminary plat of resubdivision to resubdivide the property. Do we have a second condition?
Yeah, the other one that I would recommend is that it's conditioned upon the applicant obtaining consent from the other owners of the Parkway North Center Planned Unit Development for the application.
I'll entertain them.
And that's been consistent with every development plan that's been outside of SO. So when Woodview was approved, they had to get the consent of the other property owners there, as you think about that fit. And they obviously did. But that condition kind of has been consistent with our process.
Okay, with those conditions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what's your timing?
When do you think you'll be back to us with final development plan approval? Before the end of the year?
Or, yes, it should be before the end of the year. That's the plan. We're going to go as quickly as we can.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda, and we have no items on that. Following that is old business, and we have no items on that. Next, we have new business. And 24.72 is a resolution granting a four-month extension on a building permit for 936 West Cliff Lane. Andrew?
Good evening, Mayor Protemberg and trustees. This is the rare occasion where the Village Board is considering a recommendation from staff to grant a four-month building permit extension for an addition and remodel project with conditions. After two years, the building permit at 936 West Cliff has exhausted its administrative approval process. The village's municipal code stipulates that projects of this nature may receive a permit for 12 months, and then daily penalties may be imposed. Following the one-year extension, staff has granted three additional four-month extensions for a total of 12 months beyond the original permit period. The last extension expired on May 16 of 2024. The contractor received a grace period, and the village did not stop work on this project until last week, which was June 12, pending further Village Board action. No penalties have been issued to the contractor as of yet. Staff has continually worked with the contractor to keep the site in a safe, clean, and workman manner consistent with village standards. Some of the previous inadequate site maintenance conditions have included missing silt fence, sinkholes in the right-of-way, broken sidewalk, tall grass, missing tree protection, unsecure fencing. Had daily fines been imposed, which are authorized in the municipal code, those penalties would have exhausted the performance-guaranteed deposit that the village already has on hand. Our goal is to get the contractor back on schedule to begin work, possibly as soon as tomorrow. Staff's trying to reach a resolution on this matter and therefore recommending approval of the four-month extension with the following conditions. We recommend granting the extension so that it would extend until September 16. The applicant would have to pay the accompanying extension fees. In this case, that's $1,300. The applicant would pay for a new building permit that's prorated off of the original base building permit. So that would equal $3,746. Additionally, we're recommending that the applicant pay an additional deposit in that same amount of $3,746, which could be returned to the applicant on a monthly prorated basis, so $936.50 per month if all the work is completed prior to September 16. In the event that the interior work is not completed as evidenced by a final occupancy permit and all the exterior work, including the grading and drainage, is not completed by the deadline, then the additional deposit would be retained by the village. Also, we're recommending that all the construction signs be brought into compliance with Section 6.70 of the municipal code. That was a construction sign ordinance the Village Board approved last year. This project was already underway, so they did not have to bring it into compliance. But since we're now activating a new permit, we recommend that they bring that signage into compliance. And then, of course, the applicant must maintain the project in accordance with village construction standards, security fencing, tree protection, construction material storage, et cetera, in order to avoid a stop-work order. Staff's not recommending imposing daily fines at this point, but of course, that is an option that the Village Board could choose to pursue. The applicant is Anthony Moscarella here with me of Samara Development. The homeowners, I believe, are also here, Mr. and Mrs. Waltz. Staff has spoken with the contractor and the homeowners prior to tonight to advise them on this matter. We believe our interests are aligned. The homeowners, the village, the contractor all want to see this work get completed as soon as possible. I'll turn it over to Anthony, Tony Moscarella, that can also request the extension and answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm Anthony Moscarella, requesting an extension for 936 West Cliff. We have had significant labor delays when this project started, which caused us about a six-month delay out of the box. And eight months ago, my office manager suffered a series of seizures and was then in a medically-induced coma for four months and is still not recovered, which had a significant effect on my business. So it affected all of our projects and this one specifically. I am a longtime Deerfield resident. I live in this neighborhood. I have been building in Deerfield for 30 years. So I ask graciously that you grant us this extension, and we can get this family into their home in the next several months. Thank you.
Thank you. Does a homeowner wish to address the board? Is a homeowner here? Did you wish to address the board? Okay, thank you.
Do you have a realistic expectation that you can finish this by the time?
Absolutely. We are currently in the finishing stages. We were, I was with my clients today picking out their final countertop selection. Their cabinets are installed. The painters have been working floors, doors, trim, on the inside tile. All are done, completed.
So this final extension would give you a realistic timeframe
Absolutely.
to absolutely complete this?
Absolutely. We intend to get them in in the next two months. I know that the extension is four, but our intention is to have them in in two months.
Thank you.
I would say that is obviously what the village is looking for, the board is looking for, staff is looking for. However, we need to look at the full picture. This thing's been going on since March 2022. There was one extension, a second extension, third extension. Now we're being requested, we're being asked to grant a fourth extension. I would impress upon you, if we're going to provide that this evening, there may be no more extensions.
Understood.
Okay. Are there any other trustee comments?
No, I just wanted to know about the time.
I'm sorry?
No, no questions.
Okay.
And if I may.
Please.
And one of the things, just a call to your attention is, and so also you're aware as well, is with the resolution, it would require both the owner and the contractor to sign the unconditional agreement of consent, one of which are the provisions in their states, that in the event that they don't get it done by the deadline, they also are waiving the right to contest any fines. So the village will have the right to find So the village will have the right to fine them, and they will be responsible for paying fines without contest. So there is a hook here. If it is not done by the deadline, there will be financial penalties that we can impose to make sure we get this across the finish line.
Which nobody wants. Right. We'd much rather you finish the project. And these poor homeowners want to move in.
Understood, as do we.
And are you in agreement with what was just stated?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No.
I would ask if there are any public comments concerning this agenda item. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution with the recommendations, the six recommendations, I believe, stated by Andrew in the presentation. Is there anything more?
And those recommendations are all embodied in the resolution itself as conditions, so that is in there. So it's just a motion to approve the resolution is drafted.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and good luck to you, sir. Next is 24-68, approval of a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving an agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for the purchase of a digital in-car video system. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and board. The police department is seeking approval of a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approval of an agreement with Axon Enterprise for the digital in-car cameras. Currently, the police department utilizes in-car recording systems with our patrol units for traffic stops, emergency response, pursuit driving, other situations that could assist in the prosecution of offenders, officer safety issues, investigation of citizen complaints, training, and other situations that may arise from the documented events. The current digital in-car system that we are using is manufactured by WatchGuard and was now owned by Motorola and was originally purchased in 2021 with our last fleet of squad cars. The system currently is reaching its end of life in 2025, and the police department also is recommending the replacement. And this recommendation is based on the end of life, the poor maintenance and service responses from the company, issues with concerns of the operation and reliability of the equipment, and the overall operation plan of the department with switching to one location for our digital evidence. The purchase of the Axon Fleet Mobile Camera, like I said, will fall into our previous plan with our Axon Body Cameras that you approved, the Axon Interview Cameras that was also previously approved, and then also the Axon Taser sevens, which we also recently purchased. Basically, that all goes into one system, all that information. Back in November of '23, the mayor and the board of trustees authorized the purchase of our replacement squad fleet that was projected to be in 2025. We have received information that the fleet will be coming early. I guess that's a good problem to have with getting cars earlier. With that expected early arrival now pushes the need for the cameras earlier. This will help eliminate the cost of installing the old cameras in the new cars, taking them out, and then putting the new system in. So that'll eliminate a large extra cost. This system that I'm asking for today was being budgeted for through the vehicle, this is a vehicle equipment replacement fund, since we purchased it last in 2021. So we've been putting the money aside for that. Again, the department requests with the wavering of the competitive bidding because of the integrated recording and storage system for the body cameras, the tasers, the interview cameras, and all of that. So the department is asking to waive the competitive bidding for the purchase of the 10 in-car video camera systems and for the new Mark fleet. The department, we will be able to maintain the data and the footage from the old system still until we are able to transfer it to the new system when that whole transition comes back with the migration. The department is recommending the approval of the resolution, waiving the competitive bidding and the approval and the agreement with the 10 digital in-car systems from Axon Enterprise, Inc. out of Scottsdale, Arizona, for an overall cost of $155,742, not to exceed that. If you wish, I can go through the breakouts, but it is in yearly installments. The first installment would be October of this year for $28,754, October of '25, 29, 9:04, October '26, $31,100, '27, 32, 344, and then the final in October of '28 for $33,633.
Brian, do we usually pay for things in installments like that?
Axon works in this fashion.
That's how they do it.
Which is, WatchGuard didn't, the previous one. I think it works better for municipalities, that it can be spread out as opposed to coming in with the one purchase. The way it's done here, it's really beneficial to us the way we've been with the VERF.
Right. But we're not paying more because we're stringing out the payments.
Right, right.
We're not concerned at all, but I understand the exchangeability and the coordination and everything from having everything from one company, but this is a whole lot of stuff from Axon. I mean, we're very dependent on them then for all of our policing information.
Yes.
That doesn't make us nervous at all in case this company encounters difficulties?
I don't think this company will experience difficulties just due to the fact that this is not only us, this is nationwide, this is worldwide. This company is.
They're the guys.
Yes. It's funny you say that, because my first question to them is, when I talked to them, was when are you selling your company?
Yeah.
And they said, we're just buying companies. So I don't see the issue.
Okay.
You know, I was confident with the last one, and then they sold.
Great.
And then I just explained a lot of the stuff.
Thanks, Brian.
There's always a risk.
It's always a risk.
There's always a risk. So, but I'm very comfortable with this, and all the surrounding agencies, you know, use the Axon, and we're not hearing any negative.
And it feels like we already started down that road, right? We're already using Axon.
Oh, yeah.
This is just continued integration.
This is the final piece. This is the final piece, actually. So.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
I'd move approval.
Hang on. Need to ask for a public comment on this agenda item. Seeing none, now I will entertain a motion. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Appenheim.
Yeah.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
And Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Next, 24-71, an ordinance amending and revising the annual budget of the village of Deerfield for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024. Eric?
This is the budget amendment which would allow us to take early delivery of the cars that Brian just talked about, as well as the software which you just approved. The money is available in our vehicle equipment replacement fund. Had we known they were going to come in 2024, we would have proposed it during the 2024 budget process. We had planned to now propose it in 2025, but because we have the chance to get them early and the money is there, we are asking to amend the budget for 2024.
When's the last time we were told we could get vehicles early?
Years. Anything else, Eric?
That's it for me, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Is there any public comment regarding this agenda item? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, 24-70, a resolution approving a concession agreement with Landmark Coffee LLC for the lease and operation of a concession stand at the downtown train station. Justin?
Thank you, board. A few months ago, Matthew White, who's a Deerfield resident and the owner of Landmark Coffee LLC, approached the village about leasing the Deerfield Metro Station coffee shop. As the board may know, in March of 2020, the long-term coffee vendor there had shut down due to the COVID pandemic and decided that they did not want to reopen. And since that time, that location has been vacant. So when Matthew approached us, it was something we were extremely excited to have a coffee shop there. It's been, you know, frequent topic of discussion with metro commuters of wanting a coffee shop there. So after some negotiation, the terms of the one-year lease would be, it would start July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. The first two months would be no rent. It'd be $500 per month thereafter with automatic renewals with annual CPI rent increases. Looking at other metro leases for coffee shops, we believe these are very fair terms and similar to the lease terms pre-pandemic. Matthew's here with his wife and would like to say a few words, too.
Matt, can you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, hello. My name is Matthew White, Matt White. I'm a Deerfield resident. My wife and I, along with our two young kids, have lived in Deerfield now for just over two years, and I'm very excited about this opportunity. So essentially, yes, I'm seeking the board's approval to occupy the space. I decided to call the coffee shop vending concession store, Landmark Coffee, to honor the station's historical nature, and I plan on selling essentially coffee and bottled drinks and packaged food to fit the needs of the average metro commuter between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. So that is what I'm here seeking approval for. I want to thank Justin very much for all of his work and communication. It's been a delight working with the board, sorry, with the village. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm excited to see that space used again.
Yes, I'm really glad, too.
Exactly what we need there, so thanks.
Matt, you're aware that ridership still is only about half of what it used to be.
Yes, I am aware of that, and I've been crunching numbers and taking a look at things and whatnot, and it would be nice if it increased. But yes, I'm aware. Thank you.
As a longtime commuter and dentist and is at the station in the mornings, is there a possibility of your getting a connection to bring in newspapers in the morning?
In fact, that is one of the terms of the contract, is to include the sale of newspapers.
Terrific, thank you.
Good idea.
Good service.
Anything else, gentlemen? Are there any public comments on this matter?
I like the idea.
We all did look at you.
If you said no, we might have questioned him.
Well said. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Appenheim.
Yes.
And Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck, Matt.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
When do you think you'd start operating? I know you've got to do some prep work. No, no, no.
What's got July 1st.
The hope is July 1st, pending approval from Lake County.
Okay. Busy two weeks.
That's two weeks from today, indeed.
Wow.
We'll see you there.
You won't have to do anything in the space, will you? The space is pretty much ready.
We do.
We do?
We do, some minor improvements that we've had to make. There was a minor leak, and it's also the Lake County Health Department.
Oh, okay.
That's a big problem.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Next, items for discussion by mayor and board of trustees. We had a food truck Wednesday. Unfortunately, I couldn't go. Justin, any comments on the last food truck event?
Just 48 pounds of cheese curds sold.
Only?
Only.
I heard it went very well.
It was a great event, estimated maybe 600 people in attendance. It was the first time we had beer and wine sales, which seemed to be a huge hit with no issues, so we're excited for the next event on July 17th.
Excellent. Thank you, Justin. Also at the farmer's market, Mary and I had our desks set up for us there, and we shared space with the pride event, and there were giveaways, there was music.
Yeah.
It was probably one of the more fun farmer's markets for trustee in a town that I've ever seen or participated in. So thank you, everybody who participated. It was a real good turnout at the farmer's market, and certainly hope that continues. Next, reported the village manager.
Yep, several personnel items to report tonight. Longtime accountant Rich Jett is retiring with us, from us, after 19 years of service. And we are having cake for him on the 27th at 1:30, so if you're able to join us here in the boardroom. We're thanking Rich for his service to us, and he came to us from the Village of Mundaline and the Village of Des Plaines before that, so longtime public employee, and we're happy for Rich and his retirement. Second retirement to announce is Clint Case. He's been with us for 48 years in our building division, code enforcement, code enforcement supervisor, longtime employee there, and we're having his reception on June 21st, it's coming Friday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 570 Lake Cook Road. We've done the board and commission thing in the solarium up at the top of that building. So if you're able to stop by and join us to thank Clint, and we do have a couple of presentations for him, and I know the team's been working to honor him. And last but not least, Ryan Oats, our management analyst in our public works department, has attained the position of assistant to the city manager in Crystal Lake. So we're happy for Ryan as he moves on in our profession. That's a step up, and we're happy for him. And he worked for Crystal Lake for several years in his younger years, so this is kind of going home in many ways for him. Super happy for Ryan. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Should have asked before that if there are any items for discussion by the board.